Good evening and welcome to the St. Charles County Council Meeting of September 26, 2016. We'll start the meeting with the invocation from Mr. Scott Drasneck, followed by a pledge allegiance from Councilman Mike Klinghanger.
Thank you for standing. We're going to have a moment of prayer, silent prayer, and then I'll pray according to my tradition if that's all right. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening. Lord, we thank you for this chance to be together to serve you and to serve this community. Lord, we lift up to you the elected officials of St. Charles County that you would bless them and keep them. Father, according to your word, we pray for justice to roll like a river, for there to be peace and tranquility, holiness and righteousness in our community. Father, we pray for those who are in need, pray for our families near and far. We ask that you would give wisdom and that you be glorified, and I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carol, what'd you call the role, please?
Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Ehlum.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Klinghammer.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Here.
Okay, we begin this meeting with public presentations. Jeanette Kechner, I believe you're here from the Boys and Girls Club, and I'd like you to step forward and talk to council for a couple minutes, please.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to be here. Yes, my name is Jeanette Kechner. I am with the Boys and Girls Club, and I've come tonight to tell you about a product that has been provided to us, which you all have a sample laying there. This is a drug disposal packet that was given to the Boys and Girls Club to distribute, and we're trying to get as many of these out in the community as we can, and we certainly are not having any problem doing that. They are a welcome thing for many people, and the packet will allow you to put in forty-five of your unused pieces of medication, a cup of water, seal it back up, shake it up, and throw it in the trash. So it doesn't get much simpler than that. You don't have to go taking your meds out, or worse, as I hear some people say, "Oh, I just flushed mine down the stool." I really don't want to be drinking it, and that's what's going to happen if we keep doing that. So let's dispose of them properly, and we will have these available at the Boys and Girls Club. You're welcome to stop by. We'll give you whatever you need. We do have more of them coming in this Wednesday because the first five thousand of them have gone very quickly. So there's definitely people wanting them. We've had some good comments made about them. You know, it's, "Oh, I didn't know how I could get rid of my medicine," and I know that please take it, you know. So this is, it's not something new to get rid of your medicine. We want everyone to do that, but this is a means to do it in your own home and safely. So, you know, please feel free to stop by the club. Both clubs will have them, Boys and Girls Club on Mexico Road and our one over here on Lindenwood. And we just want everyone to take it, and if you have any questions about these, we had a nice presentation at the club when we received them, so we're happy to pass them on and share them with the community.
Was that a grant from somebody, or where did?
Actually, these came to us from Mallinckrodt. And it just, you know, they called us and asked if we would mind participating with them, and of course, we certainly don't mind. We're happy to and feel very privileged that they ask us to do so. So we've had good response. Also, another organization that came to us, and we talked to her about it, Walking for Wellness. I'm sure you all know that organization, Gee Vigna. She's done great things getting, you know, trying to get the word out so that we stop getting drugs passed around. And of course, Mallinckrodt, you know, manufactures drugs, but that's, their product here is to get rid of the unused, unwanted drugs. Unfortunately, we all sometimes need them, but, you know, when you're done taking them and you have some left over, here's your disposal method. So, any other questions?
No, thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks for all you're doing.
You bet. Thank you.
Mr. Elman, I believe you have some people here to-
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I know the members of the council have been busy for the last two weeks now, asking questions and exploring the possibilities on the prescription drug medication program. I've asked a couple of people just to give short presentations tonight. I'm first going to ask Dr. David Pogomar to come up. Dr. Pogomar is an emergency room physician at SSM West and has many occasions to deal with people that could possibly be doctor shopping. He's also a member of the Board of Healing Arts, which is appointed by the governor and approved by the Senate, which deals with disciplinary actions against doctors. So after Dr. Pogomar, I'm going to ask former Senator Tom Dempsey to come up and just give you a little background on kind of the history of this issue in Jefferson City. I know it's something that he has supported in the past, and hopefully can give you some idea of the public policy considerations that have gone into this bill. And then finally, I think Hope Woodson is going to make a short presentation on exactly how it will work. And again, I hope that all your questions have been answered, but if they haven't, that'll be a last chance to ask. So, Dr. Pogomar, you're up.
Thank you, sir. Yes, as Mr. Elman stated, I'm an emergency doctor at St. Joseph West in St. Charles County. And I've been there, I've been practicing emergency medicine in St. Charles County for about twenty-five years altogether. Been doing it in total more than thirty years. So I've had a lot of experience with people that are dealing with pain issues and then the adverse effect of uses of narcotic pain medicines. So that's becoming, we read all the time about the increasing trouble with narcotics and particularly with prescription drugs in our society. I think it started several years ago when hospitals and physicians took the attitude that every patient had to be free of pain, and so there was a very liberal use of narcotic pain medications without thinking of the ultimate consequences, which we've come to today, which is the fact that there's so many more people now addicted to and using both prescription drug and heroin, other illicit narcotics. The problem is, is that people who may have a legitimate reason for taking pain medicine, get prescribed pain medicine, and then somehow that finds its way into the hands of people who are abusing those medicines. In addition, people who don't have a legitimate reason to be prescribed those medicines come to see physicians or emergency departments or other places to get prescriptions for those drugs and with the intention of abusing them or selling them to people who will abuse them. So what this type of program will do is to enable physicians and others involved in prescribing those medications to more or less track people in their use of prescription pain medications. In other words, there'd be a database somehow, we'll hear more about that in a minute, that can be accessed quickly and easily and securely by those of us who prescribe such medicines to see what the pattern of use of those medicines have been. So I and everyone that I know in medicine strongly supports this. As you probably know, every state in the country, except for Missouri, has their own statewide program to do this. Missouri is the only one, for various political reasons, that doesn't have one yet. So as I understand, our county and some of the surrounding counties are stepping up and going to work on this for us. So I strongly support the passage of this, and I think it will really help us to save lives. You know, weekly, we, in our county, we have several people that die of some type of narcotic overdose, and it's either prescription drugs or people overdosing on heroin who got started on prescription narcotics and then moved to heroin. So it's a huge problem. I spoke to somebody last night who came to the hospital with a heroin overdose. Fortunately, he was able to be reached by paramedics in time, given a drug called Narcan that reverses the narcotics. You all know about that. I think that our county police and paramedics are now using that, and that's in many cases, such as the man I talked to last night saved his life. But he was a person who got started taking prescription narcotics after knee surgery and then couldn't get off of that and move to heroin. So thank you for letting me speak. I strongly support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you.
Senator Dempsey?
County Executive, Mr. Council President, members of the county council, like Tom Dempsey, resident of St. Charles County, 3103 Buckskin Path. For at least the last six years of my time in the legislature, I supported this concept of the prescription drug monitoring program. As Dr. Pogomar mentioned, there are forty-nine states that have a prescription drug monitoring program, Missouri being the one that doesn't. And I supported it because I was concerned about, just as you are, people dying from addiction to opioids and heroin. It was frustrating to not be able to take care of this issue during my time in the legislature. It had the support from the House every year. It had, I would, it had majority support in the Senate. In 2013 was the only year that we were able to overcome a filibuster, and amendments were added during the amendment process to put a $6 million fiscal note on the bill, of which that fiscal note was not produced until after the bill was amended and perfected. So, and I believe that the amendments were added to kill the bill. And the concerns that were raised were concerns over privacy, and the anesthesiologist, who's a county council person who worked in St. Louis to craft their ordinance, and I think yours is similar, has taken into consideration concerns on cost and concerns on privacy. I know that their program or the, what you're being asked to consider would be a company that administers the program that administers the program for twenty-five other states, states like Utah. There would be a $7 cost per year per prescriber and per pharmacy. So that would be $7 one time annually. I thought that's a nominal cost, and it's a tool for healthcare providers. It's a tool for healthcare providers to, one, prevent addiction to opioids, and, two, that if they have an awareness, and only a treating health advocate with prescriptive authority would have access to this information, but, and only when they're treating you or treating an individual. If they were to look at anyone else, it would be a violation of federal law under HIPAA, and they would be subject to those penalties. And they have the highest, APRIS, which is the company, has the highest level of encryption. It's equivalent to what they have for HIV users. So they've taken great lengths to address the privacy concerns, and my understanding is that the entire cost of the program for the state of Missouri, for those who participate in the state of Missouri, would be $150,000, when our fiscal note was $6 million. So I think it can be done. I think it would provide great benefit to families in Missouri and in St. Charles County, and I hope you support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. I think for further discussion, if Hope, we'll just, if you want to stick around, we'll just bring you up when we discuss the bill. Moving on to public hearings, we have a public hearing for the 2016 tax rate. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and speak on that, the proposed tax rates? Seeing no one, we'll move on to public comments. Is there anyone that would like to speak about anything before the council tonight? We would ask that you limit your speech to three minutes. We will alternate back and forth between pros and cons of a topic, and we'll try to stay on the same topic at once. So who would ever like to speak, come forward, state your name and address, and please discuss with us what you want to talk about.
Good evening, council. I never thought I'd have to come forward with this. It seems insignificant, but here I am. And I hope you do something with the drug bill. I think Mr. Brazel's introduced. For forty, over forty years, I've got the newspaper, free newspaper, become full of ads. I don't want it. I've tried my very, very best to get it stopped. I've asked the lady who throws them not to throw them nicely. I've called a number of times down to Post Dispatch, Suburban Journal, anybody and everybody would listen. They assured me it'd be stopped. Months and months and months has gone by. I've went through this over and over and over. I'm the crabby old guy now, you know, got the rocks with the advertisements, and, you know, I don't mind a few things on the door. It's all sales ads now, everything. We, you know what I'm talking about. We all get this in the mail and blah, blah. It's just incomprehensible. Plus, I got the phones. I can't stop ringing. I get fifteen to thirty calls a week. Yeah, you're all familiar with that. I even called the police department to see if the prosecutor would prosecute this, and apparently, you know, like littering, it's my property. I pay taxes on it. I live there. I've requested everybody. I went down in person even last week to talk to the people at the journal. I'm sick of it. I've had it. I'm American. I certainly don't need any of this. I don't want. I hope I reserve the right as a taxpayer. My driveway and everything is mine owned, and they seem to think it's really not important. Well, if this ain't important, maybe bigger things ain't important to a lot of people, but I'm here to ask you to pass an ordinance where we can stop some of this stuff. I've had it. I might want to throw rocks at the van, you know, but I control myself. You know, enough is enough. Fifty-two times a year, I'm picking up, you know, paper I don't need, don't want. I've expressed I don't want it. So I'm laying it in your hands, Mr. White, my councilman. I'm hoping that you can come to some kind of agreement monetarily, that just like litter, it's one hundred and fifty and up. You know, I know there may be problems because I can't verify, talk to any of these people, really. You know, I don't know what the procedure, but I think it's going to be simple to come to concurrence of the minds with all of you, and I hope it's fairly quick, because I've had it. Enough is enough. This ain't funny. I know they get good money. You know, I'm sure Kohl's and Midas and all, they pay good money. Maybe they get thirty cents of paper, but I think all of us are getting pretty tired of it. I would suggest if we do pass that, you'd put in your monthly St. Charles County thing that you can opt out of this, because obviously I can't now. They got more say than I've got. And I thank you all for the time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to speak about this particular topic? Anyone else like to speak about another topic for the council this evening? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Renee Schuster, and I'm a resident of St. Charles County. Thank you for this opportunity to spread the word about a proposition that will be on the ballot in November. I like, I would say, all or at least most taxpayers want low taxes. I also want a strong community, so thank you for what you're doing to make our community as strong as it could be. I truly believe that strong schools and strong communities go together, and so I have a concern as one of the taxpayers who no longer has children in the school system. I care enough about what's going on to be part of the yes vote committee, because in Francis Howell, the board has been very cautious and has, on several occasion, voluntarily rolled back their tax rate even more than legally required, and now they're falling fourth within our five school districts in the county as far as the rate of taxes. So second to the lowest, the only one with lower is our neighbor who has the opportunity of having a utility tax available to them. So in the past couple of years, I believe they've cut approximately 150 jobs. I don't know the exact number, but well over 100 jobs. Class sizes are going up. This year, they had to cut tutoring. I'm worried about the kids, and I really hope that we, this referendum passes. I appreciate the opportunity to spread that word, that we want strong schools. We're so fortunate to live in St. Charles County where we have five strong school districts, and we want Francis Howell to stay a member of that group. So please consider voting yes. I have some literature I left here, or I can give you one now, whatever you prefer.
You can leave it there, ma'am.
Okay, we'll leave it there, and if anyone in the room would like a copy, I'd be happy to share. Thank you for this opportunity to get the word out. Again, that's November 8th, and it's called Prop Howell. Please consider voting yes.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding the Francis Howell School District proposed tax increase? Seeing no one, is there anyone like to speak about another topic for the council tonight? Yes, ma'am?
Drug monitoring.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for your-
Thank you. You're welcome.
And I don't think you're my councilman.
Hi, my name is Nina Dean, and I live at 203 Shady Rock Lane, O'Fallon. I stood here two weeks ago and asked you questions about the drug monitoring bill, yet not one of you had the respect to contact me and answer my questions. So then I wrote each of you an email last week. Mr. Cronin was the only one, and at eleven o'clock this morning, he sent me an email that consisted of, "Sorry I'm so late," and I've given the email to other people to answer. But tonight, you have the vote, and you guys don't have the answers to my questions. Okay? Missouri is the only state not to bow down and become a prescription drug monitoring state, yet despite all the hand wringing from this body, we are not the number-one state in drug abuse or overdoses. Shouldn't we be number-one if we don't have this miraculous program? In my emails to you, I explained why your program won't work and will only increase heroin use. In fact, if the stats run true, you will have doubled our heroin users within a year. Since you have been warned, I must believe that is your intention. You must want to be like Cleveland area, where fifty-two people died from heroin or fentanyl during August. The opiate deaths last month were the most in that county's history. Before you point to the fentanyl, it isn't fentanyl prescribed in the U.S. It is coming illegally from China. Is there drug monitoring in Ohio? Yes, they do, but that didn't help those fifty-two people or the increase they've seen year after year since putting in drug monitoring. The truth is, Missouri can't even, isn't even in the top ten of states where people die from opiate overdose, but Utah is. How can that be when we are the only state that doesn't monitor prescription drug use? Going through the stats for drug monitoring, you will find many unintended consequences. Now, understand, for St. Charles County, they will be intended consequences because you've been warned about them. Number one, heroin use will increase. Number two, pharmacies will have an increase in robberies. Pharmacists shall be attacked and hurt or killed. More twenty-four-hour pharmacies will close down, thus making it harder for ill patients to get medicines in the middle of the night. Mental illness being treated with illegal drugs will increase. Crystal meth use will increase. Since St. Charles County has actually made it easier to doctor shop for your Sudafed, it should go up immensely. Number five, you will put the small pharmacies that have a better chance of identifying the drug prescription abusers out of business with your unfunded mandates. You will find your server hacks increase because you will have data that is desired by the hackers. I just want you to know that I also know in 2013 that St. Charles County was indeed hacked, and that you would think of putting us in that position. And we just had Camden County hacked, and the FBI had to come in, and there's been a doctor's office who was hacked, and all of the patient's information was put on the internet.
We'll be talking about that security when the bill comes up, ma'am.
You can't secure it.
Well, well, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in favor of the prescription drug monitoring program? Seeing none, is there anyone else would like to speak about any other matter before the council this evening? Okay, we're going to move on to the regular part of the meeting then. From here, we go to oral report from county executive. Mr. Elman-
Mr. Chairman, I have no report.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any items tonight to be removed from the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Consent agenda passes. Moving on to, are there any, moving on to resolution number 16-10.
Resolution dash six-ten, sponsored by John White. A resolution appointing Mark Osman to the Board of Trustees of the Greensbottom Levy District.
Questions or comments regarding resolution bill number sixteen-10? Hearing none?
A resolution appointing Mark Osman to the Board of Trustees of the Greensbottom Levy District. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Resolution sixteen-ten passes. Moving on with bills for final passage. Chair at this time would entertain a motion to move bill forty-three eighty-one to the front of the agenda. Mr. Brazel?
I'll second. Or I'll make a motion to amend the agenda. I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to move bill forty-three.
Second by Mr. Hollander. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Bill, okay, we'll move on to bill number forty-three eighty-one. Would you please read bill forty-three eighty-one?
Bill number forty-three eighty-one, a health ordinance with a penalty provision establishing a new chapter of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, developing, regulating, and administering a program for monitoring the prescribing and dispensing of Schedule Two, Three, and Four Controlled Substances by professionals licensed to prescribe or dispense such substances within St. Charles County, Missouri, and authorizing intergovernmental agreements to operate such program in conjunction with other political subdivisions and private entities.
At this point, Hope, would you please come forward and if you have questions from the council, and if you'd just give us a brief overview of the security issues, how the mechanisms, what's going to work, very similar to what the Senator Dempsey did, please?
Sure. Thank you for inviting me up and talking about this. I had something long prepared, but I'll just kind of cut to the chase of what we were going to talk about, how the program works. So what we're hearing a lot of is, we're going to be housing all this data, and this data could be tapped, and it could be hacked, and so forth. We will house zero data in the county of St. Charles. All of this data will be housed by the vendor. St. Louis County will not house it. St. Charles County will not house it. St. Louis City will not house it. This vendor operates in twenty-two different states. They have been in operation for twenty-two years, and in fact, many states have converted recently to this vendor because of the ease of use. The data will be housed with them, cleaned up by them, and put into a usable format. So then that begs the question, what do we do with it? Well, for physicians and registered users, before they would prescribe something to a patient, they would be able to access the information to see if this particular patient has been to several other doctors to get the similar medication. So that could give them control to make better choices about what they're prescribing for their patients and actually give them better treatment regimens. For the pharmacist, it allows them to look to see if a patient has tried to fill this prescription at several other places prior to coming to them, so it helps them make better choices before handing off that prescription to them. That's the primary use of this system. That's the primary use of this system. The role of the health department, what we will be using it for is aggregate data only. We will not be accessing protected health information. We don't want to access protected health information. It will not be handed to us in any way, shape, or form. What we will be using is population health data. Right now, St. Charles County, the state of Missouri as a whole, we have very limited unusable data. We know there's a problem. We know heroin usage is on the rise. But to the providers who do treatments and community efforts and education, there isn't really good population data out there. The system will allow us to access that and to put it into a usable format to give to those partners. They can apply for grants, it'll help treatment facilities. That's really our primary role in this. So, you know, I want you to walk away tonight knowing that, you know, a wise councilman said to me that for every action, there is always a consequence. And you are absolutely right. The two consequences are, there is a price to this. And I am thrilled that St. Charles County is willing to take on that burden instead of putting that on the providers and the registered users. And it's very minimal compared to what it costs to treat somebody who's addicted to heroin. Is it going to stop all heroin on the street? Absolutely not. This is not a system to stop that heroin user from going and getting something more strict and, you know, something more harmful that's on the streets. What it's there is, it is an undisputed fact that people who become addicted to heroin a lot of times start with prescription medication. That was prescribed to them for real reasons. And then that spirals out of control, and they end up going to heroin because it's a cheaper method. This kind of combats that a little bit. You know, I applaud you guys for looking at, you know, the bigger picture and taking on something that no other county has taken on. You know, Mr. Brazel has come up with a few different ideas, and I haven't always supported all of them. And not because I didn't know his heart was in the right place. It was because I get behind something not to check a box. I get behind something that actually can make a difference. And after researching this, talking with physicians, talking with pharmacists, I know that this is something that can actually make a difference. And that's why I'm before you tonight, to ask you to pass this.
Mr. Brazel?
Okay, thank you, Hope. Appreciate your hard work on this. I just want to go, we started this drug, that there's been a drug epidemic in the last eight years or so. And St. Charles County has taken a hard stance on this. Now, if you guys remember, K2 came out, oh, I don't know, it probably started eight years ago or something, where they're making synthetic drugs, and they were selling them at bait shops. And they were selling one on 94 and 40 up on my area. And I could never understand why there's so many cars in the parking lot when they're selling worms. It just was really strange to me. And we started figuring out that somebody said that they sell synthetic, it's those little fancy colorful packages. And the high school kids from Francis Howell are going out, and they're buying this stuff. And so we were starting to have reports of overdoses. People, whenever you make the K2, it would never be the same. So they'd never know how much, if they took one dose, one, it'd be different the next time. People were dying, kids were dying, they were doing crazy things. One report, some guy ran through a church naked, I don't know if you guys remember this, but this stuff was going on. St. Charles County was the first county to take a hard stance on it, and we made it illegal for this. And then the state followed. And so, and then also, the other choice we made was Sudafed. I know we get people who disagree with that issue, but I'd like to have you know that we talked to, me and Tom Neer. Tom Neer came, when he was sheriff, he brought this idea to us, the council. And I was opposed to it, adamantly opposed to it. I said, "That's messing with people's freedoms, and this and that, and you're interfering just because there's drug addicts," you know, and, you know, the whole, all the talking points. And so we listened to some different narcotics officers, drug experts. And so we started talking to other counties. We talked to Franklin County, we talked to Jefferson County, and Lincoln County, and we had some drug summits. And so this isn't some kind of an idea we just came up with in the last year, the last six months. We've been working on these problems for the last 10 years. And the problem is too, that you have to understand that we have to take a hard stance on this, or this area will be like North St. Louis. And I'm saying it as blunt as I can, it will be. And from Fifth Street to Mid Rivers, it will be like North St. Louis. And I mean crime and problems, and we don't want that. We will take a hard stance on that, and we will do what we have to do to protect our community. We do not want to stamp on anybody's rights or constitutional rights or privacy. So every time we look at something, we look at it very hard. With the Sudafed, we made it where it requires, it doesn't require prescription, it actually requires a phone call or a note from a doctor. We were having meth labs in this community. We were one of the number-one counties in the state of Missouri that had meth labs. And it causes crime, it causes crime on people, auto thefts, all kinds of problems, just like heroin. So it's not just the addicts it affects, it affects the whole community. And so when we did the meth, the Sudafed requirement, some of the bigger communities, Jefferson County did it, and Arnold, not so much the whole county, but the big cities did it. And Franklin County, City of Washington did it. They all followed along. And Troy, they did it, we all agreed, and they all did it. Well, guess what? Our meth labs, we, I would say, four or five years ago, and Chief Todd can verify this, I called and asked the narcotics officers, we were having in the 20s, we're having meth labs in the 20s, 20, 25, 30 meth labs a year where we're busting down, then the houses are contaminated and all these other problems. Well, I think this year, we had two, maybe? Is that right, Chief? So it worked. I'm telling you, it worked. Now, they do, they do go to Jeff, they go to St. Louis County, they buy them, and all the numbers spiked, like in Chesterfield and Bridgeden and all the outlying areas. The Sudafed sales spiked in those communities, because, yeah, sure, you can still drive across and just buy it and bring it. But they're monitored a lot better, too. So we really hammering out the meth problem. But now, the question would be, did that create a vacuum? Because we have a huge heroin problem. And I don't know, you can't, you got to address every drug issue. You can't say, "Well, let's not do anything about that, because it might create a vacuum over here." No, you got to hit it head-on. You got to. And so this heroin problem is an epidemic. If people were dying like they're dying from the flu virus or some kind of a disease, do you think we'd just be questioning it? You think we'd be talking about it? No, we wouldn't be talking about it. We'd be fighting this thing head-on. We'd have every health consultant in here trying to figure out what to do. So what we did is, we had these summits about what to do. We didn't feel the state was doing what, for whatever reasons, they weren't doing what we felt needed to be done. So with, help with the community leaders on health, and Steve, and all of us got together, we had a lot of meetings, and we came up with this. The monitoring system that we have here is not our system. It's not a government-run system. It is not, St. Louis County's is not a government-run system. All we do, we are facilitating it. We are facilitating the process. And it's still going, it's going to be under the medical professions, the doctors, and it's going to be the doctors first and the pharmacists. Those are the only people that will have access to that information. And they have all that information anyway. When you get a prescription, everything is government, the federal governments and everything. So it requires all this information anyway. All we're doing is putting the dots together. If pharmacy A is selling Tom Smith 20 pills of opioids on Monday, when he, when his son or somebody or whoever steals or plagiarizes a prescription and goes to pharmacy Y, then they'll look on a computer, "Oh, well, Tom Smith got 20 of these things on Monday, he don't need 20 more on Wednesday." How is that freedom, violation of anybody's freedom? It's within the HIPAA system, it's within medical system. It's not a government person doing it. It's a doctor doing it, who's already has that patient, along with the pharmacist. So we're not infringing on anybody's right. What we're doing is, we're doing something about it. We're just facilitating the program. That's all we're doing, we're facilitating the program. And so we felt, this county feels that, you know, there's a lot of talking points, you can sit there and talk about infringing on people's freedoms and all, but this county government, just like all the municipal cops, we're in the trenches. We see this every day. We're not in Jefferson City with the state police. We're here with local cops, knowing the problems, knowing the break-ins, knowing the car thefts, knowing the shootings, knowing everything that's going on in this county. And if we don't do anything about it, we will lose control of our community. And that's why we're doing this, and that's why I 100% support this. That's it.
Is that all? You usually leave something for the rest of us to say.
Yes, and this is-
Well done, Joe. That, I agree, and eloquently put, thank you.
And this is from the guy that told me that we need to have this wound up at quarter to eight.
There's a big debate on tonight, guys, so we got to get home for it.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak or discuss this? Mr. Ehlmann?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to not only thank Councilman Brazel, but a whole bunch of you have been involved in this issue, going back, what, to February, when we first started talking about it. And at that point, we decided we'd wait to see what happened in Jefferson City. And then even after, after the legislature adjourned, we decided, well, let's wait until St. Louis County gets the system set up, so we know exactly what it's going to cost, exactly how it's going to work. So I think we were smart, you were smart, to wait as long as you did, but I think it's time to act now, and we'll be right there with everybody else when this system gets started.
Okay. Moving on, let's read the bill.
A health ordinance with a penalty provision establishing a new chapter of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, and developing, regulating, and administering a program for monitoring the prescribing and dispensing of Schedule II, III, and IV controlled substances by professionals licensed to prescribe or dispense such substances within St. Charles County, Missouri, and authorizing intergovernmental agreements to operate such program in conjunction with other political subdivisions and private entities. Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Bill 4381 passes. Moving on to bill 4375.
Bill number 4375, an ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP 1606 for a short-term physical rehabilitation facility to HFS Revocable Trust, property owners, and Ball Ventures LLC, doing business as Sunterra Springs LLC applicant.
Questions and comments regarding bill number 4375? Mr. Elam?
I'd like to ask, Vance, do you want to come up, or do you want Matt to come up? And talk about the changes that have happened?
Full.
Okay. So since our last meeting, and Mike will ask you to come up in a little bit, too, to speak for the homeowners association. I bet I've spent 20 or 30 hours in talking to people who live in Canvas Cove, and talking to the developer. So there's been a lot of talk back and forth about trying to get an in-and-out, all full in-and-out, off of Highway N. I know the developers talked to MoDOT, I know the HOA folks have talked to MoDOT, I've talked to MoDOT, Senator Onder's office has talked to MoDOT, Representative Barr's office has talked to MoDOT. And MoDOT's been pretty firm in, no is pretty much where MoDOT's at. So thanks to everybody who tried to get this done, but, Matt, do you want to talk a little bit about some of the changes? Because in talking to the interim president of the HOA, they requested some changes from the plans, and I think you'll see some of this that we can point out in the drawings.
All right, good evening. Matt Fogarty, premier civil engineering, 308 TCW Court, Lake St. Louis. So yes, Mr. Elam, I have to thank you for the amount of hours, the residents, Mike especially, because we've all put a lot of time into this. And considering the circumstances, really, the key is, and you can't see it on here, but I'm going to come up here then and show this to the council. There was a HOA meeting involving, last Friday, or two Fridays ago?
Two Fridays ago, wasn't it?
Yes. And so one of the concerns came up, the train had a screening burn into this frontage to help with the houses. And instead, now what we can do is, we can burn here towards the entrances, but then we're going to keep all the existing vegetation. So that's approximately 350, 400 feet over there, which helps save trees and drugs and things like that, but it's obviously pretty thick and overgrown, but we'll keep that as is to help with screening.
So is that pretty much from the third house down? Houses four, five, and six are pretty much going to be looking straight across at vegetation as to what they're looking at now?
Yes.
Pretty similar to that?
Yes. The crosswalk is the point of where we got rid of the sidewalk, all the way to the north from the crosswalk on. And that was in conjunction with Darton Prairie to help provide that screening, because when you got from the sidewalk, they're trying to catch them back up to grade, it really didn't work in that area, and so it sort of had to go. Well, since you got rid of the wall, we could then catch back up to grade a lot sooner and keep a large, we're talking 50, 60 feet of green area that can stay, you know.
Right. So one of the things, as you guys look at this, you'll see that sidewalk that was there, the sidewalk's gone now, and that's at the request of the HOA.
Yeah. See that here from this crosswalk? So all this.
So the HOA, one of the things that the developer had put that sidewalk in, because the HOA had talked about, there's a bus that hits at Monet and Inn, and so the kids walk up, what we thought at the time was up the side of the street. We found out later, they actually walk on the side of the grass where this center's proposed to go in. So the developer had put sidewalks in there. I was told the thought was from a safety concern to do that, but the HOA said they'd rather have the green space. So they pulled the sidewalk, more trees are going in there, try to save more of the vegetation. The whole purpose of this was, those six houses that are across the street from it, to do everything we can to conceal, for lack of a better term, the facility from their view, to keep it more of a setting that they currently have.
Yeah.
Because there were a couple of different concerns that the residents had voiced. At one point, it was home value, they were afraid that their home value was going to drop, because they had someone told them that their home values could drop up to 15%. I think we pretty well got that straightened out. Okay, except we don't have that straightened out with you guys? Okay. So we're not going to get that straightened out with some folks, obviously, but I think in the majority of the, I bet I've talked to 50 different homeowners in Canvas Cove, by email, by phone call. I joined your Facebook page to try to put as much information out there as I possibly could, and to try to come to an agreement on this. So most of the people that I've talked with have said, if it doesn't affect their property value, they're not in favor, but for lack of a better term, they're more apathetic about the development. So it's, they don't feel positively or negatively about it. That's pretty much the best way I can have. The second part was traffic in and out, people cutting through the subdivision. So in kind of looking at that, by getting rid of that second entrance, I think it's going to cut down a lot of that, because I don't think there's a big reason for you to drive through Canvas Cove, and to cut through Canvas Cove if you only have a ride in and out off of Inn, and then you have your front entrances between the first and second home. Once you get past that first home, there's not going to be another entrance down there. So it should cut down on the majority of the traffic coming in and out of the subdivision. I can't really do much about the concerns where people say they think there's going to be traffic in and out through the subdivision, cutting back from Fizee. I don't know why they would cut through your subdivision and do that. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. But I understand that's a, that's a concern. But I know you've spent a lot of time in doing these drawings, in trying to figure all this out. We appreciate the plans that you guys got, because most of the time, we get napkin drawings of folks who walk in. So I appreciate the developer spending the time in doing that. Is there anything else that you wanted to add?
No. As you said, MoDOT's been the key behind a lot of this.
Right.
And we've sort of been restricted by what we can do with MoDOT, and that's why we're here. So I would appreciate everyone's time, though. Thank you.
Do you want to come forward and speak for the homeowners?
Sure.
Okay.
So I want to thank you guys for having me back up. Last time I was here, I asked for a little bit more time to take a look at the impact this would have on the neighborhood, and to discuss the project with the developer. Since that time, we have gotten together quite a few times. Since that time, we have gotten together quite a few times, we've made some headway, as evidenced by the berm and the trees that they're talking about putting in. The impasse seems to be that entrance onto Monet, which, there are a lot of definitive statements here that I'm not getting from the same people. One, I guess the first thing we could start with is home values. Mr. Klein did reach out to you, he amended his statement to say 10% home value loss is expected. We did get another letter from Rebecca York, she just sent it over today with RE/MAX. I've got copies for everybody if they want to read, but essentially, I don't know if you want me to read it or just summe, but...
Give me the summation if you would, that'd be great.
She said if this project is completed as proposed, the property values in Canvas Cove could very well decrease by 15 to 20%, really only the front six, the those that face this development. She cites the current feel of the community being broken up by this, additionally, this being leverage for buyers' agents to talk the price down. I can pass these out, would you guys like to read them now or leave me here, I know that the vote is coming up? So essentially, right now, we'd ask you to hold off, like I asked before. The Board of Aldermen for Darden Prairie also decided to pass a resolution Wednesday night asking for a little bit more time, they have concerns about this as well. One of the big ones is the increase in traffic and the entrance onto Monet. I have been told that MoDOT said this is no way, no how, not going to happen. I called Jim with MoDOT, and he gave me a different story. There's a big difference between the can I put this here and how can we make this work question, I asked the how can we make this work question, and he explained to me and sent me an email, which I can give to you guys, that the problem here is the distance from the front of the neighborhood, it needs to be 440 feet, that puts it directly on the property line next to the Montessori School next door. They can't, you can't have those two driveways right next to each other, that would violate as well. So I reached out to the Montessori School and discussed with them co-opting an entrance is basically an out, is all that is on that side. The owner of the Montessori School is open to that, they're excited about being good neighbors, and I'd like a little more time to explore that, because if that was possible, then everyone would be happy. I was told by the buyer's agent for this property that if it was possible to have this on Inn, that would be their preferred route anyways, they said that that would be better for them. So I think that this could be a win-win if we had a little bit more time to discuss it.
Did you talk to the manager next door, did you talk to the owner of Montessori?
Both.
Okay.
I was going to get a little more information from them today, but they're off on Mondays. I'd like to sit down with the developer with them. No promises made or anything, I was just putting out feelers to see if they'd be open, and they are.
Okay. Here's my frustration. So I keep having conversations with people, and they tell me one thing, and then someone from the homeowners association has a conversation with the exact same person, and you come back to me with a different story, not you personally necessarily, that is a different story. Then what the owner of Montessori told me was no, they were not good to do that because there's liability issues that come into play in having that joint entrance. So I was told, no. If Jim Wright gave you any kind of feel that there was a possible way to work that out, that's completely different than what I got from him and what I got from the guy that he referred me to in Jeff City that has to appeal this. They were both firm no's. And Senator Onder's office got the same thing, so no offense, man, but you're the only one who got a different answer than four other people who contacted them and contacted Jeff City.
I have an email that he sent me talking about it, if you want it in writing.
I'm just saying, he's telling you one thing, but he told all of us something different, and then he told, the guy in Jeff City told me something different, too.
And I think that would highlight the need for us all to sit down together and talk about it at the same time, because he can't say two different things at the same time.
Go ahead.
Okay. I read the letters that you guys sent me, and 39 of them were forum letters, but Tim and Paula Betts took the time to actually draft a letter, and I read it, okay? And they say right particularly, the biggest issue we have is development of the entrance to development off Monet Drive, okay? So knowing that area a little bit, I grew up on Highway K, I went out there this morning and I walked it, I parked on the side of the road, and I paced that off all the way across that property. And it's 400 feet or better by pacing from that, from the existing entrance to the old house there to Monet Drive, okay? And it's a flat stretch of the road, okay, you can see 500, 400, 500 yards either direction. I didn't, now Highway N's not the traffic that it used to be, it's more like an outer road for 364. So, you know, I don't see any reason for MoDOT to stake out the position that they have on Inn. I don't see entrance, if you go down that road, you see all, every house along there's got an entrance onto, on the Inn. So I don't see why MoDOT's got this big problem. But I want to make it clear that if you read the summary for this bill, okay, it's not our place to say where those entrances are, okay? It's MoDOT on Inn, and it's the city of Darden Prairie on Monet Drive.
Yes, sir.
That is a Darden Prairie street, okay? So that this, part of the recommendations, a part of the things they're going to have to do besides getting a MoDOT clearance, they're going to get a clearance from Darden Prairie. So you folks that have an issue with this entrance on Monet, and I think that's your biggest issue, Darden Prairie kind of asked us to slow down the process, but really, I think this is a suitable place for a convalescence home. It's a, I drove up and down, you've got a Montressor School, I think it could be a lot better than a quick trip or something else in that corner. But I think Mr. Ehlum's done a lot of good work getting that berm along there, and if Darden Prairie can pressure MoDOT and try to get an entrance on Inn, you might have problems solved. But that is not our place as a council to do, that's something Darden Prairie's going to have to do.
And the reason that I'm discussing that with you guys is because I feel that it does directly impact the surrounding community, and that I would ask for that to be a condition to reduce or eliminate the impact that it's going to have on the community. The other, another problem that really have been trying to get some clarification on is the amount of traffic that's going to be in here, because we haven't been able to get a clear definition of what kind of outpatient services they're going to offer. The majority of what has been responded is, we don't have outpatient services, but they can't explain why they listed that as a service offered on their certificate of need to the Missouri Department of Health.
You know, in this instance, I think Darden Prairie knows your neighborhood better than we do, okay? And I think Darden Prairie owns Monet Drive, they control that street, okay? And I would suggest you folks talking to them, when it comes time before them to just to give the permit, part of the conditions that are already in place for this is that they have to get permission from city of Darden Prairie for access to Monet, okay? So that condition's already there. Beyond that, I don't see any reason to push this off any.
The other issue that we had was the tree line there, to have a barrier, and as this letter, if you read it, it outlines, having a solid barrier there is going to be crucial to maintaining the neighborhood. That would be a condition that I would request for this, is a very solid barrier, preferably of evergreen trees, that year-round, it will shield the facility completely from the neighborhood across the street.
It'd look a lot better than a scrub that's there right now, too, I walked it there.
Matt, do you want to say anything else on this?
No, I appreciate everyone's time again, and yeah, there's been a lot of hard work here, and we've worked with the city and the council to get where we are today, so, and the residents, it's taken everyone, thank you.
Well, I thank you both for speaking.
Yep.
I would submit that when you look at master plan, this area is laid out to be commercial. This, if you use this particular way, for some reason, my phone started talking to me, that's weird, but if you go with this, you keep the property R1A with a conditional use, so it doesn't make that piece of ground commercial. With all due respect to your realtor person, I haven't found anybody else to be that way except for that guy who gave you the preliminary report and her. I've talked to the Realtors Association, who I trust, I've talked to two different assessors or appraisers who have both given me different stories than what you've got. So I appreciate where you're at.
We spoke to the Realtors Association, too, the same guy that talked to you.
Right, and Mark Dahlman called me, did you call him? So Mark Dahlman called me after you talked to him, so I know exactly what he told you.
And I know, yeah.
Right, right. So I would suggest that we, I'm in favor of this, and I would suggest that we pass it.
Okay, any other comment from any other council member?
Moving on.
An ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP 1606 for a short-term physical rehabilitation facility to HFS revocable trust property owners and Ball Ventures LLC doing business as Santeras Springs LLC applicant. Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Bill number 4375 passes, moving on to Bill number 4376.
Bill number 4376, an ordinance of the county of St. Charles, Missouri approving the preliminary plat of Willow Creek Way.
Questions or comments? We'll go wait a minute for let these folks clear.
Just go ahead, Mike, this is an easy one.
Go ahead, go ahead. Bill 40, questions, comments, Bill 4376, hearing none.
An ordinance of the county of St. Charles, Missouri approving the preliminary plat of Willow Creek Way. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Bill number 4376 passes, moving on to Bill 4377.
Bill number 4376.
Chair would entertain a motion to table this. There's new technology, myself and Mr. Hazelwood have been discussing. Do you need to read the title for that?
Motion to table, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion is tabled, moving on to Bill number, Bill number 4378.
Bill number 4378, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute the local public health agency consolidated contract ERS 220-17099 with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for fiscal years 2016 through 2019.
Questions or comments regarding Bill 4378, hearing none.
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute the local public health agency consolidated contract ERS 220-17099 with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for fiscal years 2016 through 2019. Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Bill number 4378 passes, moving on to Bill 4379.
Bill number 4379, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a memorandum of agreement with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services to provide for secure access to the Missouri State Public Health Laboratory Open ELIS Web Portal.
Questions, comments regarding Bill number 4379, hearing none.
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a memorandum of agreement with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services to provide for secure access to the Missouri State Public Health Laboratory Open ELIS Web Portal. Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Bill number 4379 passes, moving on to Bill 4380. I need to announce that there is a revised Exhibit A regarding changes from conversations with interest in cities to implement the sewer lateral program, other than that, any other questions on Bill 4380?
I need to read the title real quick.
Go ahead.
An ordinance amending Section 7 of the St. Charles County Ordinance 15-011 and levying annual fees on qualifying residential properties in unincorporated St. Charles County that are served by sanitary sewers operated by the cities of St. Charles and St. Peters for the purpose of funding the repair of those properties' lateral sanitary sewer service lines.
Questions or comments, hearing none.
An ordinance amending Section 7 of the St. Charles County Ordinance 15-11 and levying annual fees on qualifying residential properties in unincorporated St. Charles County that are served by sanitary sewers operated by the cities of St. Charles and St. Peters for the purpose of funding the repair of those properties' lateral sanitary sewer service lines. Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Bill 4380 passes, Bill 4381 has already been passed, we move on to Bill 4382.
Bill number 4382, an ordinance amending the 2016 annual budget to reflect the classification change of certain positions.
Chair would entertain an amendment to Bill number 4383, and for clarification purposes, Section 1, Item A will be zero.
We're still on 82. We're on 82.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm moving on past that. Sorry, pardon, any questions or comments regarding it?
4382.
Yes, I'm sorry.
None?
It's a none, move on.
An ordinance amending the 2016 annual budget to reflect the classification change of certain positions. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Moving on, 4382 passes, moving on to 4383, I was trying to do two at once there, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Just a point of order, is that under Missouri statute on the, since Senate Bill 711 was passed, you have to read the resolution prior to passage of the bill.
Okay, so you want to do the resolution first?
The law requires that prior to the fixing of the tax rates, you must read your resolution.
Okay, then we also have an amended resolution to consider.
Yep, do they need to read the title before we make amendment to the resolution?
That's a correct statement. Resolution, Resolution 16-11, a resolution pursuant to Chapter 137 RSMO, setting forth the intended rate of taxes for the general revenue fund and for various special funds up and for the county of St. Charles, Missouri for the fiscal, for the year 2016.
I'd like to make a amendment to the resolution, changing the language on the second page, the first part, the third whereas, I'd like to amend that whereas to read as follows. The general tax fund rate is set to a voluntary rollback rate equal to zero below the voter-approved tax rate of 16, 16 hundredths of a cent.
Second. Owen?
I got another portion after that, so we'll get to that in a moment.
Okay, I think there's an error on this, we talked about this before.
I'm catching the section that you're reading is Section 1A?
No, no, on the third whereas.
I think you're on the bill, I think we need to go to the resolution.
No, I'm on the resolution, page two of the resolution, the third whereas on page two.
My third whereas is general tax fund rate is set at the adjusted voter-approved rate.
Right.
Below that, I have Section 1.
Joe? Yes. If I could, the, that whereas needs to be changed also to volunteer, to, as I read it, the voluntary rollback rate equal to 16, 16 hundredths of a cent, striking out the part that starts with the adjusted voter-approved tax rate. The rest of that sentence needs to be struck out, and substituted with a voluntary, voluntarily rollback rate of zero below the voter-approved rate of 16 hundredths of a cent, as provided by administration.
Okay, are you reading something different than I'm reading?
No, I have an amendment.
I understand that the 16 hundredth of a cent is an increase on the general over what we have, right?
Right. The next part is going to address that.
Okay, move on.
Oh, you want to do it all together?
No, go ahead.
Okay.
Just to address Section, Section 1A is important part.
The second part of that, then, would be to amend the resolution, Section 1A, and strike 1 and 7 hundredths of a cent, and replace it with 16 hundredths of a cent. So the third whereas, and then Section 1A would reflect the same thing. Is that correct, Joanne?
No.
No.
You want to take the 1A to zero.
Yes.
Correct, I'm sorry, I read it wrong.
We're at zero now.
My fault, I read that part wrong. But I'd like to amend Section 6, amend the resolution in Section 1A, strike 1 and 7, 1 and 7 hundreds, and replace it with zero.
Zero, correct, okay. And for clarification, Section 1B would be 21.27 hundreds, okay? And, and 1C would be 4.41 per 100.
What, point of order, can you have, Mike, is this your motion? Right.
I just want to clarify with the motions, was there a bunch of copies that's floating around? Is that the numbers that you have on yours?
The one that I have leaves everything the same except for, it's as it was presented, except we're taking the general fund back to zero instead of 0.16.
But we also still have to set the rates for the other two funds, and the other two funds should be...
Actually, we don't need to, if we don't make any motion to change it, then it will stay at the same rate it was in 2015. Point of order? Is that correct, Joanne?
It would be zero in A, 19.62, which is the current rate in B, and 4.41 in C.
C, that's what I got, okay?
Right, so the only part that's changing from what was presented was the Section 1A.
Which you're taking to zero.
Okay, okay, so for the record, the way she described it's the way you want it, okay, all right. Second for that amendment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So now we are moving on to the...
No, I have to, we have to pass the resolution. No, I have to, we have to pass the resolution.
Resolution, I'm sorry.
Amended Resolution 16-11, a resolution pursuant to chapter 137 RSMO, setting forth the intended rate of taxes for the general revenue fund and for various special funds of and for the county of St. Charles, Missouri for the year 2016. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Amendment Resolution 16-11 passes. Moving on to bill number 4383.
Bill number 4383, an ordinance fixing and establishing the rate and levying of taxes for the general revenue fund and for various special funds of and for the county of St. Charles, Missouri for the year 2016.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend bill number 4383. I'd like to amend section 1A and strike one and 700 cents and replace it with zero cents.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We now are vote on amended bill number 4383?
Amended, that's the only change we need.
Mike, is that all you need to do?
Just one change.
Is that correct, Joanne?
Amended bill 4383, an ordinance fixing and establishing the rate and levying of taxes for the general revenue fund and for various special funds of and for the county of St. Charles, Missouri for the year 2016. Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
No.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Amended bill 4383 passes. Nothing, we have a bill for introduction, bill number 4384.
Bill number 4384, requested by Joe Brazel, Dave Hammond, and Mike Klinghammer. An ordinance amending section 500.092, ordinance of the St. Charles County, Missouri OSCCMO, relating to abatement of violations of the property maintenance code.
Questions or comments regarding bill 4384?
Do you, we got together, it was me, Dave, and Mike that had the prior committee that worked with, at that time, it was Wayne and Drew and some other folks on community development trying to hammer out some of the issues we had last year. And as we've talked about before, sometimes when you do things, there's unintended consequences, which this is correcting some of that. What, everything remains the same with agriculture and everything like that, Joe, that you had some questions on, on your email, but what this does is it gives the community development the proper way to facilitate when, we never intended that if you live in a subdivision, your grass can be two feet tall. That was never our intention. And so with the warrants and all that things, it required, our ordinance required them to get an ordinance or a warrant to go on the property to issue a ticket. So we just changed the process of how they can facilitate getting these properties cleaned up more effectively and efficiently, and that's really all it is.
The important part is that it will speed up the process of taking care of those routine maintenance issues, primarily cutting the grass. It's the one that we're hit with the most, most prevalent this time of year.
Yeah. In most of these cases, a lot of the properties are vacant anyway.
Exactly.
That's why.
Okay.
So that created a lot of problems.
Okay. Table, moving on to table bills. There's no action there. Any announcements or miscellaneous this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. 25 minutes late.
That was mostly Joe talking.